Trustee Buena.
President.
Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
Here.
Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Ino.
Here.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Vettis. Student, trustee Cordoba will not be able to attend this meeting. Thank you. Absent.
So we'll have VP Ino lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if he'd all stand. Today, I, we'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of the Los Angeles City College family. Dr. April Lynn Pavlik passed away on December 23rd, 2023, surrounded by her loving family after a long battle with breast cancer. She was first diagnosed with breast cancer in 2008 and went into remission. Her recurrence in 2017 proved especially challenging, but she faced her treatment with stoicism and showed more bravery and will than many others could. Dr. Pavlik devoted herself and her career to the care of others. In addition to a successful practice as a therapist, she also worked on staff at City of Hope. And 2014, Dr. Pavlik became a tenured faculty member of the Psychology Department at LA City College. She was a beloved teacher, mentor, and friend to many, and her charisma, skill, and knowledge were well-known to all. Dr. Pavlik is remembered by her colleagues and friends as smart, funny, beautiful, and irreverent. She was the life of the party, always quick with a sarcastic one-liner or fierce hug. The students she inspired to pursue careers in psychology may be her most enduring legacy. So on behalf of the entire LA Community College District community, we extend our deepest condolences to the Pavlik family. So please join us in a moment of silence for Dr. April Lynn Pavlik. Thank you for that. Are there any members of the public signed up to address the board regarding the approval of the agenda and order of business?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Now, the Los Angeles Community College District recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tatavium, Surrano, Kish, and Chumash peoples. We honor the pay, we honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth and healing and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work and to teach and educate on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including the Ferdinando Tatavium Band of Mission Indians, our Rillanio Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, the Abulanyo Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, our Rillanio Band of Mission Indians Kish Nation, San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, and the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Before we proceed, Chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda or the order of business?
Members of the Board, good afternoon. Yes, there's one correction I'd like to bring to your attention that concerns consent calendar item, business item V1, P as in Victor, one. The recommended action should read, and this is only on the term of service, not in the amount. Recommended action is authorize settlement of claim with Arbocoff and Henderson LLP to pay for legal services outside of the scope of the professional services contract for work performed from, and this is the correction, August 2023 through November 2023. The total cost $44,186. No other changes? Please note that correction.
Thank you, Chancellor. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and order of business with the requested amendment?
I'm moved.
Motion made by VP Ino and second by VP Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Trustee Buena.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Vettis.
Yes.
Now, may I have a motion and a second to approve the regular board meeting and close session minutes of December 13th, 2023, and the special meeting minutes on, for December 9th, 2023?
I'm moved.
Motion made by VP Ino. I'll second.
Trustee Buena.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela. Trustee Vettis.
Thank you. Do any members of the Resource Table wish to be recognized that it's time to make comments before the board?
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Hernandez. I'm the First Vice President of the District Academic Senate. Angela Chavetti is out of town, and she may try to zoom in, but I'm here today in person. And I wanted to, first off, wish each of you a happy New Year, right? Really, on behalf of the faculty in our district, on behalf of the District Academic Senate, particularly our new President Henderson, Vice President Ino, and Hernandez, fellow trustees, and Chancellor. You know, this is a time of year when we look back and we reflect on our accomplishments and our challenges, and then we commit ourselves to our vision and hopes for the future. So it is in that spirit that I want to return to the District Academic Senate resolution that our DAS President Angela Chavetti reported on at the last meeting of this board. The day after that last board meeting, the District Academic Senate held its regular meeting and adopted the resolution requesting independent external audit due to financial and procurement irregularities and effective actions to combat sexual harassment and discrimination. And a number of things that were in that resolution, number of resolves. One was requesting that the Board commission a Blue Ribbon Panel without any connection to the Board or District Administration to conduct an external and independent audit to identify the full extent of favoritism and the violation of procurement procedures and other policies and procedures, and implement the recommendations of the external audit to ensure accountability for any violations uncovered. Also, the District Academic Senate requests that the Board improve efforts to prevent sexual harassment and discrimination, respond decisively to reported incidents, ensure survivor-centered responses, do timely thorough and impartial investigations into allegations of sexual harassment and discrimination, and take appropriate disciplinary actions if the violations are found. We also urge the Board to regularly review its policies and procedures regarding sexual harassment and discrimination, ensure their effectiveness and compliance with changing legal standards and best practices, and solicit recommendations for policy improvements from all stakeholders, including staff, faculty, students, administrators, and commit to ongoing collaboration with external organizations, experts, advocacy groups to continually enhance their efforts to combat sexual harassment and discrimination on campus. And we made it clear in our last resolve that there's a, really, our faith is challenged at this moment in time. And so we resolved in an event of insufficient progress on these recommendations that the LA CCD Academic Senate consider a vote of no competence at its February 2024 meeting, right? So I thought it was important to bring all this back up because I was playing back the meeting and I was recalling Angela was reminding us of what was in the LA Times. You know, the $10 million judgment for sexual harassment. And, you know, and also I was reminded of the countless examples of those experiences that we've encountered as faculty leaders throughout the district. And so even with everything that we're asking for, we really, I think, crafted this in the spirit of being reasonable but seeking, you know, action. I recognize that problems will remain, but we will make tremendous progress together. So we want to have faith again in the district's capacity. But as, you know, many of these challenges, you know, that exist, we've been reminded of in the past year, really, they go back ages in this district. It's perhaps one of the challenges of a large bureaucracy. I would say that it was in that spirit that over two years ago, the District Academic Senate had recommended that there be a district-wide survey of all employees in the district, really to kind of get a sense of what is the climate for our employees in the district. Countless examples of those incidents that fall below the legal standards, but are definitely examples of implicit bias, of bullying, and of course, we've heard from other constituencies about this. I would hope that we pursue a proactive approach this year, that we resolve to actively, really, shape, lead our district so that we are an exemplary standard for other districts to follow when it comes to sexual harassment, when it comes to discrimination, when it comes to really living up to our vision. That's my hope, that will be our solution. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Congratulations, Madam President.
Thank you.
I hope you all had a chance to get rest and reconnect with your loved ones. I made a New Year's resolution to practice more self-care, which I've already broken. And many of you probably have. We have some challenging times ahead as we face the end of hold harmless, a state budget deficit, and a new funding formula. If we work together, we can meet these challenges head-on and create a more dynamic and responsive district for our students' needs. The days of long waiting lists for classes are gone and may never come back. We must take a holistic approach to our students' basic needs because retention and success are the only game in town. I want to thank our district, the Chancellor, the Board of Trustees, for your innovative work in offering courses and languages other than English, Dream Resource Centers, AMoja, Puente, the recognition and programming for LGBTQIA+ students, Asian-American students, student housing, and much more. I want to thank the campus presidents and administrators for all their hard work and innovation that have helped us get our enrollments back. I want to thank our staff for always being there for our students, administrators, and faculty, even during the early days of the pandemic, you were back at work. I thank our faculty for your continued commitment and care to our students, campuses, and community. Thank you again for giving us a contract that respects the contributions of those faculty. I hope this partnership is based on mutual respect and understanding to benefit our students, campuses, and community. I respect you and what you're trying to do, even if we disagree or I feel it may be misguided. Only those who are arrogant and ignorant feel that they have all the answers and are always right. I am neither of those things. I realize that I make mistakes and I'm always learning. Let's have an open and honest dialogue to create a better understanding. Let's respect all our faculty as equals, including non-classroom faculty. Returning to work orders, signing remote work assignments, and remote work training disrespect our counselors and librarians, and do not treat them as faculty. As high-trust employees, all AFT members are faculty and should be treated equally. We see no distinction. And this culture is shared by our union family, El Camino College, where they had the wisdom to elect a counselor as their union president. Their members didn't say, "Well, Kelsey Ino isn't really faculty." Without hesitation, they elected her to represent all faculty. We have the same respect for our non-classroom faculty. I want to ensure you do too. Last, we need to take a critical look at enrollments. Do we know how many students we have lost due to AB 1705? How many students have failed their college-level math or English course, excuse me, twice? And we may lose them after a third try. If so, have we identified those students and contacted them to offer additional assistance? How many of our students haven't returned because they took those courses twice and possibly given up on their college dreams? And if we don't have these answers to these questions, we need to get the answers to these and many more. We all want the same thing: healthy campuses and enrollments, while working satisfying jobs with reasonable compensation. I believe in us. We can get there, but only as partners. Let's work together to make our district better than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I'm going to start by saying Happy New Year. I hear I can say that until the end of the month. Somebody said until MLK, but I'm going to give it to the 34th. But Happy New Year, everyone, and good afternoon, President Henderson, VP Ino, VP Hernandez, and to our distinguished Board of Trustees, Inchessa Rodriguez. About the New Year Resolution, like Dr. McKeever, I've already broken mine with those butt kates, but thank you so much for having those available. But I really stand here as the AFT 1521A president, looking at the mission and the vision of our college campus, and classify stand in solidarity with you in making sure that our students are the primary focus. When I hear about education, I often talk about that argument that classified educate as well. We educate on the enrollment process. We educate on the resources. We educate them on the services. And we educate them by inspiring and motivating them on the college experience as a whole. So for that, I'd just say we stand in solidarity with the vision. We hope to continue to bring our concerns that are specific to our classified and stand with you guys, continuing that education is the primary focus. And I don't come here just to always talk about the things that are the negatives. I like to look at things in a holistic, whole-person approach. We know that the Community College is taking on a lot of other issues, primarily with housing insecurity, mental health. It's a whole new landscape, and in that, there is going to be a growth in the curve. And classified would love to stand a part of that as we are the direct, not gatekeepers, but we are at the forefront of that, welcoming the students in. So as you pour into us, we're pouring back into those students, giving them those smiles, helping them with changing their address, one of the smallest things that keep them inspired. That's what we do. We would love to continue standing with you in that. So thank you so much, and I look forward to a beautiful and prosperous year. We'll work it together. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. My name is Krista Ozan. I represent SCU Loca 99. I want to say Happy New Years. I want to say that hopefully this is a year for change. On Monday, January 15th, we will be commemorating the Civil Rights One for people of color and races here in America. As we look back to the struggles within injustices Dr. Martin Luther King endured, SCU Loca 99 members continue to face similar inequities and blatant injustices here at LA CCD. And to give some examples, Loca 99 wants to remind you of, you know, the sexual harassment of our members at various campuses, bullying and non-sexual harassment of our members at all of our campuses, write-ups of our members when using their accrued sick and vacation time off in denial of FMLA leaves, unfair working standards, and discriminatory hiring and firing practices, and administration policies for Loca 99 members when compared to other classifications, and targeting of members when they exercise their contract rights by directors, managers, and supervisors. And I just want to say, just since Dr. Martin Luther King did not give up in the face of newer injustices, neither would Loca 99. We will continue to pursue fair and equitable employment rights for our members in the days and years to come. Thank you.
I see myself. Good afternoon, President Henderson, members of the Board, and Chancellor Rodriguez. For the record, I am Dr. Deborah Harrington. I'm President of the Teamsters, representing our district deans. On behalf of our unit, we would like to extend our best wishes to all for a healthy, happy New Year. I want to also extend congratulations to our new board president and say how much we look forward to working with someone who we know appreciates and honors the great privilege we have in supporting and advancing the educational opportunities of our students, and someone who we trust joins us in placing our students and their advancement at the center of our enterprise, as by doing so, we help to bend the arc of the moral universe ever more towards social justice. On a personal note, I want to extend my gratitude to Teamster VP Donna Mae Villanueva, who stepped in to lead our unit while I was temporarily away attending to a family health crisis. Dean Villanueva is the abonnement of our motto, "Deans Deliver." We look forward to this new year. Under our new contract, we share gratitude, purpose, and the sincere wish that in this year of the wood dragon, we experience authority, prosperity, and good fortune across our colleges. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to? Right? So we have received the Chancellor's monthly report, which includes activities at the colleges from the college presidents. Do any of the presidents wish to further comment or highlight anything not included in the written reports?
Well, let's get this year started right. So I want to say congratulations, President Henderson. We look forward to an awesome year with you. We picked up where we left off in regards to events for students on Saturday, the 20th. We have our Super Saturday, where we're going to have our open house for students so that they could come and register. The following Saturday, we have the Cash for College in partnership with LAUSD South, where we're going to assist students to apply for the financial aid. And let's see if that pathway is definitely simplified enough so we could get through it. And then, just to remind you, we're entering our 75th year of serving the community. 10/10, yes. October 10th, 2024 is our gala. We have our location. It's going to be overlooking the South Face. We sent the save the dates before the end of the year. We'll continue to put them on your calendar so you could join us that day. Thank you. Okay, let's keep it going then. Happy 2024 again. Congratulations, President Henderson, Ino, and of course, Ino, and I'm sorry, Hernandez. A couple of comments. First, today on the agenda, you'll see an MOU with the Universidad Univo del Salvador. This is a partnership that we started about two and a half years ago. You know that ELEC has the only Central American Studies program for a community college in the state. So we're strengthening our partnership with Univo. They're excited about having faculty exchange programs, of course, international students, and all kinds of opportunities for our students to be able to engage with university in El Salvador. Of course, this is going to yield additional enrollments. We're excited to partner with the district and the college and the university. Secondly, I wanted to also say that we are having our events. We're having the Taco Tuesdays. Those are popular with students. Students are hungry and they want to enroll. So imagine putting those two efforts together. They're yielding a lot of positive results. They'll continue throughout the month. And as Harvard and all of our colleagues, we're gearing up for the spring in 2029. 2024, I'm getting ahead of myself already. Let me back up a couple of years. 2024. Looking forward to those events as well with the registration on the spot. The last thing I'll say is, I want to introduce somebody that's taken a lot of load off of me and is now our new VP of Instruction, recently hired, and I'd like to introduce her officially, Dr. Christina Tafoya, our Vice President of Instruction. Stand up and be recognized. And again, I want to just thank you for continuing to support our efforts, our initiatives at the colleges. We're working together to really ensure that our students get holistic services. It's not just the instruction, but everything else that comes with meeting our students where they are. So thank you again for your leadership and looking forward to a great 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Good to see you all. Congratulations, President Henderson. Looking for your leadership this year. A lot of good stuff happening on our campus. Enrollment is looking good in terms of winter and spring. So I want to think our outreach team is doing a phenomenal job in working with institutional effectiveness. We're continuing to work to clear the bots, but also, most importantly, we're continuing to work with our community to bring students on campus. So we have our first Saturday Fair from 10:30 to 2:00 on January 20th. So we're excited to welcome our students, our community, as they continue to be part of our family and our community. And we have several other activities throughout February on Saturdays to ensure that LA City College is the place for our community. So a lot of work in terms of outreach, in terms of enrollment, in terms of support. But we have one other thing that we're doing this semester. We have created a student services syllabus, which will align with our instructional faculty syllabus to provide that to every student so that they know every support service that's available to them. So we want to thank our faculty, our faculty leadership, who are working with our student services staff and faculty to continue to integrate, collaborate, and be able to provide every information to every incoming continuing students about, you know, resources, services, counseling, food insecurities. Everything will be in that student services syllabus that we are rolling out this semester, thanks to our student services division and Alan, who's been helping lead that effort. And just one more thing, we continue to bring more resources to our campus. We have donation of $71,000 from the Sterling Franklin Foundation that's going to go to our formerly incarcerated students to support our Break It To Make It program. And then also, our foundation has done a match in terms of doing, giving, give a credit campaign, which we've raised $45,000 to support our students so that they can enroll in classes. A lot of good stuff in terms of funding, resources, and we are extremely excited about this spring semester.
We're excited too. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Happy New Year. First, I want to congratulate President Henderson, also Vice President Ino and Hernandez. Chancellor, nice to see you all. I'm standing in for Dr. Nellis. My name is Larry Resendez, Vice President of Student Services at LA Mission College. And I'm very pleased to share with you a couple of things that are happening at Mission that have happened. First, I want to share about our Pacoima grand opening. You've been hearing about Pacoima. Many of you were participating in our grand opening, which was just a couple of weeks ago on December 19th. What an incredible event. If you, to say that the community is excited about what's happening, there would be an understatement. And just having you all there, many of you in this room there to celebrate with us was really awesome. I want to thank the Chancellor. I want to thank Dr. Smith. Dr. McKeever saw him there, and many of our trustees were there, obviously, President Henderson. I saw Trustee Ino, Vettis, and Hoffman. There may have been a couple of others who trickled in. I'm not sure. So if I left you out, I apologize, but it was really a wonderful event. Where we're headed now, though, is really a spring enrollment. So at Mission, we've done a really good job of recapturing a lot of the lost enrollment over these last couple of years, and we continue to do that. We had a really robust winter, and we anticipate the same for spring. We're having enrollment events, which we do every semester on Wednesdays. We call them Eagles for early enrollment, so Triple E is what we refer to them as. We actually have one today, and I apologize, I'm dressed down. Dr. Nellis sends her regrets. She couldn't make it. She wasn't feeling well. So she called me this morning. I was ready for our event. And she said, "Go down to the district for the board meeting." So that's why I'm dressed the way I am. So we have events today and the next three Wednesdays, and then we have a Saturday event on February 3rd. So there'll be a lot of focus on So there'll be a lot of focus on enrollment for spring. We're really excited with Black History Month coming up. We're bringing Kevin Powell back, and he's amazing. He did such a great job last year, and he'll be there at Mission again February 27th. If you haven't seen or heard Mr. Powell speak, he's an amazing presenter, a poet, civil rights activist, a journalist. And I believe we're going to be live streaming, so anyone can participate in it, and it'll be interactive. He really likes to have a discussion, so it'll be fun. And then finally, I was just mentioning that we're so excited. Our foundation has approved a way to support our Dream Resource Center students in employment. So the way that we've done that is we have stipends that we can offer to those who otherwise wouldn't be able to be employed. And those stipends are significant. They're $1,000 a month. And now we're able to employ a lot of our Dream Resource Center students to be part of the fabric of what we do, and that's really been amazing. So I want to send a shout out to our foundation for putting that together. So there's just a few things with Mission College. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ron Paquette. I'm the VP of Admin Services out at Pierce College, and I'm standing in for President Aguirre today. I'll start with some enrollment news. Our winter enrollment is way up. We have 15% growth, only added two new classes, so that means we're looking really good with efficiency. For spring, we have a number of Super Saturdays planned. We're adding high-demand classes, including 40 sections for the second eight-week session. As many of you know, we just opened a new ag building, which we're very excited about. We're working on the delivery of 17 new pianos to the music department. The automotive faculty is very excited about offering classes in Spanish at the end of the spring semester. And then there's so many events going on at Pierce, it's hard to track them all, but I'm going to mention three. We have a day of service that's sponsored by Assembly Member Jesse Gabriel coming up. That's always a great event. There's a Guatemalan festival. It's going to be a lot of fun. And then we have our third annual Valley Asian Cultural Festival that's coming up as well. So we're working very hard at Pierce to make 2024 successful.
Good stuff.
Congratulations, Madam President. Trustee Eno, First Vice President, and Second Vice President Hernandez, certainly always Chancellor Rodriguez and the other members of the board. Southwest College is continuing to move forward. We continue to recover our enrollment over the last several semesters and academic sessions. We've continued to so increase in our recovery of our enrollment, including winter, adding winter with the spring. We are certainly looking forward to the new year. Already, we have started off with a significant event, which was on January 6th. The Snoop Dogg Youth Football League converged about 2,500-plus members of our community on last Saturday on the campus. We have rekindled, if you will, that partnership. Over the last two times that they have been there, over 6,000 people have visited Southwest College for that event. And so we're looking forward to continuing to kindle that relationship. I want to end with this, as I've been always talking about, the winning Cougars. We were received from our Margay Miller, our coach, who has been awarded Coach of the Year for our conference. 15, I think it was 15 of our student athletes were acknowledged for their work and commitment to not only academics, but obviously to their football skills and ability. Five of them were first-team All-American, and another 10 were for offense, and another 10 of them were first-team All-American for defense. And so we can see that our sports programs are coming back in a very robust way. Lastly, if you didn't get a chance to come see our refurbished, if you will, gym. This past Friday, we were able to witness the Cougars coming to the gym and set the foundation, knowing that when you come into the Cougars' house, you will be eaten up. Did I say that out loud? 109 to, I think they scored 70 points against Real Hondo. I have to check their number, but when you get to 109, you just stop counting.
Congratulations, President, trustee Henderson, and Happy New Year to everyone. I just want to share a couple of announcements. Like my colleagues, we are working very hard in terms of enrollment and retention as well with our registration Wednesdays, our Super Saturday, but we also have a spring open house that's scheduled for January 27. So I'm always appreciative of those events because it brings faculty, staff, and the whole college together for the students. Another announcement I wanted to share is Dr. Hernán Duf as our Vice President of Student Services. So he's a great addition. And then lastly, a new event that's taking place this Saturday at Trade Tech. We're hosting Senator Alfonso Butler. As you know, she was fielding for Feinstein. So she's hosting an event that will be honoring a vision for youth engagement for the region. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. A couple of items to highlight this afternoon. Since the last board meeting, right after the last board meeting, we met with Burbank Unified. You might remember that we had a conversation about a previous meeting that we had with Burbank. And so we're following up with them to extend the amazing work that's happening with LA Unified Region North, both with dual enrollment, making sure that all high school students have access to college classes while they're in high school, from either a couple of classes all the way to earning an associate's degree while they're in high school. So the full range to also our senior year experience. So helping with FAFSA and California Dream Act completion, and then bringing the high school seniors to campus and actually enrolling them onsite in April. So that work continues to drive forward. We're excited about that. As the other college presidents have mentioned, the numbers all look terrific. Just a couple to mention, winter numbers, not just for Valley, but for a lot of folks are at historic highs. And it really is, I think, important to acknowledge where we're at with a lot of the recovery. Not just recovery, actually, to pre-pandemic levels to actually historic highs. So that's terrific to see, and I think the result of a lot of intentional work. One area that we don't talk a lot about is non-credit, especially non-credit CDCP, which oftentimes are the ESL classes. We're seeing amazing recovery there. This is, of course, groups of folks that are very important to us, and it's wonderful to see the enrollment growth there. Last year, as an example, in the spring, we saw a 70% year-over-year increase. This fall, similarly, 30% year-over-year increase. So not just a 1% or 2% change, but some really robust changes. We're expanding the non-credit curriculum too. So you'll see on the agenda today some courses to help students be successful in mathematics and statistics courses. There's a conversation or mentioned just a few minutes ago about concern about the recovery of high school students coming to us in their math and English skills. So these courses are absolutely critical. In addition, another course I want to highlight is the Non-Credit Diversity Act, the inclusion course that was developed for businesses. I think that we have a lot of amazing professional development happening at the California Community Colleges, but especially LA CCD and Valley College. So we're now going to make that professional development available to businesses through the non-credit vehicle. So we're excited about that. Next month or sometime soon, you're also going to hear more about Valley College doing more in offering non-credit classes out in the community, including at elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, Chancellor Rodriguez, members of the board, and congratulations, President Henderson. Yale University runs an international climate change study. And every year, at the end of the year, they publish a newsletter, the Year Review. They talk about progress on climate change initiatives. They highlight specific weather initiatives that we should be concerned about. They also talk about advances in business, industry, and education in addressing climate change. So in the most recent Climate Connections newsletter, they highlighted the Category 5 hurricane in Acapulco, the 600-year rainstorm in Libya, the Canadian fires, and the deadly wildfire in Maui, Hawaii. They also talked about COP28, the most recently completed international discussion on climate change. And they also listed, out of all the initiatives literally in the country and the world, as contributing significantly to advancing climate change education. The California Center for Climate Change Education, we're the only educational initiative listed in the entire, literally, world, and their overview is a significant approach. And that is because of you all's advocacy. It's a center that is for everyone. And we have made that happen, and we're beginning to get some traction in terms of its legitimacy and its importance. So thank you.
So now on to item E. First Amendment and the Brown Act guarantee a member of the public the right to criticize a public employee or public official in the performance of their duties. However, speakers are encouraged to focus their comments on issues relevant to the conduct of the public's business rather than on private or unrelated matters. Speakers are reminded that the Brown Act and First Amendment do not protect defamatory statements made, which may subject the speaker to personal liability. Are there any members of the public that have signed up since the meeting began to address the board?
No, ma'am.
Thank you so much. So now we'll move on to item F. Our student trustee isn't here today, and we do send our prayers. She experienced a personal loss, and so she's traveling. So now I'll offer trustee Hoffman, if you have any updates, as the board president of the CCCCT.
At this time, I have no updates, other than we're looking forward to the Legislative Conference and new trustee training and board chair training coming up at the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, item F2, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by VP Eno. Second by trustee Bueno. Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Um, trustee Henderson or board chair Henderson. I just have one small correction to the dates for my travel. I need to be in Sacramento on the 26th of January. I have a role at the Excellence in Trustee Workshop, the New Trustee Dinner, and I'm doing another workshop. So can we modify the date for my arrival to be January 26th through January 30th? I think right here.
Madam Board Secretary?
Right here, it's in the group where it has, where it has all of us, and it says January 28th to 29th. If you could pull mine out to say January 26th. Thank you. I know you have backup documentation for that as well.
I sure do.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you. So now for item G. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bueno and second by VP Eno. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
Thank you so much. May I have a motion and a second on item G2?
I'll move to approve item G2.
Thank you so much. Motion made by trustee Hoffman?
Second.
Second by VP Eno. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
And for item G3, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by VP Eno?
Second.
Second by VP Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
Thank you. May I have a motion and a second on item G4?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion made by trustee Hoffman?
Second.
And second by VP Eno? Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
And for item G5, may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion made by VP Eno? I'll second, Henderson. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela? Trustee Veras?
And I hope that some really fun, interesting things are happening around career and technical education, my college president. Now on to item H, report from the chancellor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, good afternoon, members of the board, colleagues. Happy to have this report in a couple of different sections. First, I wanted to build on what trustee Hoffman started earlier in her brief report related to the Triple CT. Indeed, the governor's budget was released today. It's a proposal, it's a budget proposal between now and May. Quite a bit happens between now and the May revised, right before the June 30th statutory deadline for the state budget to be approved. The news for California community colleges is generally good, and that's very, very good news. In our first cursory view of it, there don't appear to be any significant cuts to community colleges. Additional funding to cover COLA costs, both for the student-centered funding formula and for salaries, and additional funding for nursing, both to expand nursing, existing nursing programs, and to build the nursing partnerships for baccalaureate degrees in nursing. So we have a full summary of this. I will send out an LACCD memo in the next week or so, once we give some time to look at what some of the caveats are in the state budget. But again, we'll be working between now and May and ultimately June on this budget through our advocacy and budget work that we'll do. We invite everybody to the January 24th, 1:00 PM Legislative and Public Affairs meeting that the board holds, which will give a more thorough update on what we've seen thus far. The second thing I wanted to mention was, again, there is a chancellor's monthly report that's been distributed, made available to all members of the campus, district, and local communities. I commend that to your reading. You heard the wonderful reports from our colleagues, constituency colleagues and our college presidents earlier. This report builds on a lot of the good work that goes on, and it's important to recognize our most important constituency, who they are, how we go about our work, and the dedication, and really the talent of our faculty, staff, and administration to put together an educational journey that leads to the success of students. So on behalf of the board of trustees, as we begin 2024, it's important to recognize the work of every individual. There are almost 10,000 individuals who call LACCD their place of work. So again, kudos to all of you, and the numbers are looking good. Yes, thank you for that. And moving on, if we look at the screen, I'll give a couple of updates on the enrollment reports. You've seen, it's all good. And then the real special part of the chancellor's report this month is on the procurement process. And I'll say a couple of introductory comments on that in just a moment. So let's move to the spring college reports, and the college presidents have deployed in the schools several amount of Super Saturday events, and they've been very, very successful. Imagine attending a college, seeing the college perhaps for the first time, walking on campus, meeting with the counselor, meeting with someone who can help you with enrollment, and walking out enrolled and with classes. That is a wonderful task that's coordinated with our IT, our campus personnel, our financial aid, offices, our enrollment services, of course, our outreach teams, and lots of coordination. We have found this to be incredibly successful. Introduce a good number of whom are first-generation college students to this idea of education, to this idea that they can attend, to this notion that each student in our service area to this idea that they can attend, to this notion that each student in our service area is college material. So kudos to the college presidents and their teams for doing the good work on the Super Saturdays. Thank you. And this just gives you a listing of the events that are going on. Moving forward to the enrollment report that was mentioned earlier, the Board of Trustees receives these on a daily basis that we do as well. The winter session is a five-week winter session. It's a smaller number of enrollments, but the important news here is that you see green. Green means good. As you look at who is enrolling by gender, by ethnicity, by the head count, by the number of units that they're taking, you can see a very, very strong enrollment of 8% up when this report was taken on head count, and 12% up on the number of units that students are taking. Without a whole lot, as Mr. Paquette mentioned, only 1% increase in the number of courses. So indeed, efficiency, productivity is very, very good. Moving on to the those who is enrolling, I would note that 72% of winter session is online. A little bit more in hybrid, it gives you a sense of what students are looking at. It's a five-week intense session, very popular amongst individuals and university students who come back to us for lower division. Moving on to the spring semester of 2024, very, very good numbers. Again, the green arrows, green is good, 17% uptick in headcount, and a gosh, over 25%. I looked up the numbers this morning, it's a little lower, but still a very, very strong, robust number of enrollments for spring semester, still four weeks out. So again, good work for the outreach teams, those bolstering dual enrollment, reaching out to adult learners, and continuing. One of the main ways that we retain, one of the main ways that we gain enrollment restoration, Dr. McKeever pointed this out, is retention. Idea of retaining the students who have already given, if you will, their educational trust to our colleges, to retain them from fall to spring, spring to fall, and so forth, so they can have a continuous journey towards completion. So good work on there. Got the numbers there. This is a little bit more 50/50 on online hybrid and in-person. That's what's going on there. You can see the types of students that continue to enroll with us, and you see nice increases amongst most groups. Very, very good news. Oh, it's my pleasure, and I'm going to take a moment of privilege here. And you ever wonder, you know, who works at the ESC? And the kind of units that are here, who's in the Business Services Department? What does Ms. Gordon's empire look like? Ever wondered that? Well, today, you're going to see just a little slice of that. And these are, and I want to applaud, these are the people who work in many ways behind the scene, doing the work, processing the paperwork, ensuring that we are compliant with law, compliant with the public's trust, compliant and oofed with the trust that the public gives us with its resources. There's a really hard-working group of people that do that for us in the Business Services area, and in particularly in the procurement area. But before I ask Ms. Gordon to come up to introduce this presentation and whatnot, I'd like the folks from procurement and Business Service Office to please stand on the back of the room. Please stand so we can recognize all the good work that's been done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Their work is so essential to providing the goods, services, and contracts for our colleges and districts so we can continue to serve, again, our most important constituency. Back in December, the Board of Trustees, you directed staff to provide a written report to you all with information on the current procurement process, including details of the current request for proposal process at this district. We've done so. We sent it out at the latter part of December. And this is a follow-up in concurrence with the board president and understanding the interest, topical interests, the current interest in this subject. We wanted to be responsive and transparent in meeting that interest. So with that, I'd like to have Ms. Gordon introduce the topic and her team, and then we'll get through the presentation. Ms. Gordon?
Good afternoon. As usual, the chancellor took my speech. I want to say, good afternoon, Board of Trustees, and congratulations to President Henderson, First Vice President Ino, and Second Vice President Hernan. And see, I was going to include him anyway. I was going to say, I'm sure he joins me in thanking you for the opportunity to present you an overview of the district office general procurement processes and procedures. Hopefully, this presentation will provide you with a better understanding of the diligent work that they perform to ensure the campuses have what they need to obtain goods and services for our students, faculty, and staff. Ms. Valencia Moffett oversees the Business Services Division, which reports up through my office. And I was going to have the procurement people stand up and surprise everybody, but I was also going to ask if you would indulge in me having them introduce themselves so that you figure if you have a personal view of who's doing the work, you have more respect for what they're doing. So I would like to ask them to stand again and to each introduce themselves and tell you what they do.
Come to the mic, yeah.
And you can see there, sir, if he jumped up, he'd come right up.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Jason Cassio. I'm Senior Procurement Specialist here at the ESC.
Good afternoon. My name is Andrea Daniel. I'm the Procurement Specialist for LACC D.
Good afternoon. I'm Marcia Webb, the acting Senior Procurement Specialist.
Good afternoon. My name is Ramona Dubina-Gracia. I'm the Procurement Specialist here at LACC D.
My name is Andy Young. I'm the Procurement Specialist for LACC D.
Good afternoon. My name is Dorothea McFarlane. I think you've heard my voice a couple times.
Yeah.
And I am the Procurement Manager for the district.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. I'm Chris Petit, District Procurement Specialist here at the district.
Good afternoon. I'm Amir Piron, one of the Procurement Specialists. And I would like to introduce Andrew Amisca, who is not here today. Thank you.
Thank you, team. As you can see, we have a very diverse team also. So now, I would like to ask Ms. Valencia Moffett to come up and do this presentation. Valencia?
Good afternoon and Happy New Year to all of you. Chancellor Rodriguez, Board President Henderson, Vice President Ino Hernandez, trustee Buena, trustee Veras, trustee Vela, and trustee Hoffman. And in her absence, student trustee Cordova. I bid you a Happy New Year, and thank you for allowing us to come here today and to give you an overview of the LACC D procurement process. As the chancellor mentioned, that, you know, you all entrust us to ensure that the public's trust is upheld in our procurement process. And each and every person that was introduced is committed to doing just that. Thank you, Crystal. In the next several slides, I will discuss the governing authority and laws that govern the way we procure. I will identify the staff who have the delegated authority to enter into procurement transactions on behalf of the district. The district-wide procurement, I'll discuss the district-wide procurement training that my office conducts alongside with the Office of General Counsel. I will discuss the procurement transaction thresholds to give you and the audience a better understanding and overview of the documentation requirements for certain types of procurements. I will follow that discussion with the transactions that are presented here to the Board of Trustees for approval and ratification on a monthly basis. And finally, I will discuss the competitive procurement process, in particular, the request for proposals. Next slide. Thank you. At the December 13th, 2023 board meeting, as you know, we were asked to answer several questions, including who manages the district's RFP process, who selects the evaluation panel, who deems a proposal responsive in a competitive bid, timelines for the competitive bid process, and procedures for the notification. The LACC D Procurement Office, the Facilities Planning and Development Office, and the Build LACC D Procurement Program, we all follow the same statutory laws and policies with facilities and the build program having their specific policies and procedures, standard operating procedures specific to facilities and construction-related projects. But today, my main focus is on the general procurement for the products and services that are procured through my office. This slide shows what governs and guides the way in which we procure and services and products for the district. We abide by California Education Code, California Public Contract Code, and the California Government Code. Additionally, we follow the board policies and administrative procedures that you're all aware of that we have. Next slide, please. The objectives of the LACC D procurement process is to comply with the laws, regulations, rules, and policies governing procurement by California community colleges, and to conform with all of the board policies and administrative procedures that I just mentioned. As noted in the previous slide, that answered what governs the way in which we procure. Another goal and objective of the LACC D procurement process is to encourage competition among suppliers in order to obtain the best pricing. And this is accomplished by the fact that we require quotes, estimates, and bids during certain transactions that we'll talk in a couple of slides. Another goal of procurement is to prevent favoritism, fraud, waste, abuse, and corruption in soliciting suppliers and awarding contracts and expending public funds. This is accomplished through our process of requiring either a formal, formal or informal quotes, depending on the type of procurement transaction, and in limiting communication among vendors and LACC staff where we are engaged in a competitive procurement solicitation. Another goal or objective of the LACC D procurement process is to be efficient in the time and resources expended to execute transactions. And in hopes that all of that will result in the timely delivery and correct products and services to our customer, who are our students, faculty, and staff. Next slide. Thank you. The Board of Trustees has the ultimate responsibility, as you know, to contract and purchase on behalf of the district. Through Board Policy 6340 and Administrative Procedures 6340, the board has delegated authority to Chancellor Rodriguez to the positions and to the positions noted on the screen. So Chancellor Rodriguez, Deputy Chancellor, Vice Chancellor, Chief Financial Officer, the Director of Business Services, the Procurement Manager, and the Chief Facilities Executive, as well as the Director of the Bond Program and Director of Facilities Planning and Development. Additionally, in calendar year 2000, limited authority to contract and purchase on behalf of the colleges was delegated by the chancellor to the college presidents. And that is for items that are under the statutory threshold. Currently, the statutory threshold is 114,500. That went up effective January 1, 2024. Contracts and purchases over the formal bid threshold, leases greater than five days, and other additional transactions such as the purchase of cafeteria materials are handled at the district office. Next slide, please. Procurement overview. The college president delegates the day-to-day operation of their duties to the Vice President of Administrative Services for binding the district, legally binding the district. Any person who has delegated authority by the college president must participate in the district-wide contracts training session. And again, this is a training session that I mentioned earlier that we co-host with our Office of General Counsel. The procurement roadshow training. As noted earlier, we conducted training with the Office of General Counsel. And the most recent procurement training we took on the road, we went to each college. All of the presidents and vice presidents hosted us on campus. Coming out of COVID-19, we felt that it was necessary to go to each campus and have face-to-face meetings with that campus administrators and the campus community to focus on items that were useful to them and that were specific to that particular college. We used an entire month to go out and take this training or provide this training, and it took about a full day's work, about eight hours' worth of training at each and every college. The Board of Trustees was provided an example of the type of materials provided at that training. And after the most recent roadshow training, our colleagues in the Office of General Counsel compiled the results of the training survey and revealed that 93.7% of training attendees found that the training was useful or highly useful. 93.6% of training attendees found that the training materials were either good or excellent. And as you know, it includes all of our policies, procedures, our board rules, administrative procedures that relate to the purchasing of procurement. Next slide, please. The procurement dollar thresholds. And this is related to non-construction procurement. We have micro purchases. And this is, I took this directly from our training roadshow, and it depicts all of the procurement thresholds regularly handled by procurement staff at both the ESC and at the colleges. Procurement policy 0403, that's for micro purchases. For purchases in this range, $1 to $2,499, quotes are not required, but encouraged. The next policy that we have particular procedures on are our small purchases. These amounts are under $5,000. The requister must solicit at least three informal quotes, either from a catalog, a website, email, master agreements, et cetera. And these transactions, I just want to know, are handled at the campus. The next category of transaction amounts are our medium purchases. And these purchases are between $5,000 and $114,500 as of January 1st. The requirement is that the requister upload three formal written quotes into SAP, our ERP system, to ensure that they have, the district is getting the best deal for that particular procurement. Procurements in this category are reviewed and handled by the procurement staff that's here, that's in the back. And they look to make sure that the colleges have provided the formal written quotes. And you'll see in the next couple of slides what they do if it's a purchase order and what they do if it's actually a contract that is placed on the board for review. We'll get to that in just a second. The large purchases, purchases over the statutory threshold, the district's contracts and purchasing unit will process those transactions. Oftentimes, that requires a formal bid, legal advertisement, bid package, sealed bids, et cetera. We have processes and procedures in place for that. The next slide. Processing items for board approval. With this next slide, I'm going to walk you through how a request originates and then culminates with the board items being presented for approval or ratification from the college. So this is a request that will come from one of the nine LACC D campuses. The request originates in a particular college department. The item is routed through the campus for approval with the ultimate approver being the Vice President of Administrative Services. The procurement specialist assigned to that particular campus will check the documents for the requested or the required quotes and other documentation. If the purchase is a tangible good or item, then it is approved by the procurement, it is released or approved by the procurement specialist, and then issued by the Vice President of Administrative Services. Again, if it's under the statutory threshold. If the request is for a service, the procurement specialist issues the contract. If the request is for a service, the procurement specialist issues the contracts uh and negotiates the terms and conditions and then sends it back to the Vice President of Administrative Services for signature. Again, those are for items that are under the statutory threshold. Finally, the procurement specialist prepares that item for board approval. And that is what you see um each month on our board agenda for either board approval or for ratification. Next slide. This next slide depicts the similar process, but it's for the district office transactions. And I wanted to show the two different um processes, even though they're similar, just to show that at the campuses, it's the VP of Administration that is approving, that has the ultimate approval for the transactions. And at the district office, the request originates with the district office uh division, say um F B or CFO's office. Uh it is reviewed and approved by the respective Vice Chancellor. The procurement specialist reviews again for the required documents and quotes. And if the request is for a tangible good, again, a purchase order is issued. And if the request is for a contract, a contract is negotiated, created by the ladies and gentlemen that are in the back of the room. The procurement specialist prepare those items for the board for approval, and it is packaged uh in that manner. Next slide, please. Per Education Code that are listed there, eight one six five six and Administrative Procedures, the Board of Trustees must authorize or ratify all contracts within sixty days of commencement. Approximately eighty to one hundred items are presented to business items, because there are others on the board, but business items are presented monthly uh to on the agenda. These transactions include contracts, leases, MOUs, and other agreements that need to have contract terms negotiated. For these i, uh for these items. These items for this month are presented in uh sections in through you on the consent items and category Y for the non-consent items. In the last two previous slides, I mentioned the purchase orders and contracts touched approximately, or the procurement office touched approximately three thousand transactions annually, or about two hundred and fifty transactions per month. Every item that is on the board that is used or that's presented for approval, there's a contract or MOU or some form of agreement that is associated with that particular contract. So as you know, we meet monthly, so we have eighty to one hundred. So they're very busy during the interim from month to month. They're constantly writing contracts, negotiating terms and conditions with vendors and issuing agreements. I'd like to also point out that prior to the items being presented to the Board of Trustees for approval, we conduct two internal meetings to ensure that the board items are in compliance with what the board, how the board likes to see it. And then we also meet with departmental stakeholders, including uh some of the Vice Chancellors, as well as again presenting these items at the Board Leadership Meeting. Next slide. This next slide is regarding the types of procurement, competitive procurement transactions. I mentioned earlier that we have procurement training at the campuses, and it's an all-day training. And during that training, we discuss solicitation of quotes, requests for qualifications, invitations for bid, as well as requests for proposals. In the interest of time and with, to answer the questions that were posed at the December thirteenth meeting, today we're going to focus on the competitive procurement requirement of the request for proposal. In the next slide, I will walk you through the request for proposal process, which is a well-defined, established process within the district. The process in RFP, Request for Proposal, begins with a scope of work. The Requestor will initiate the RFP process by preparing the scope of work specifications. The scope of work describes what it is that they want us to accomplish or want a vendor, a prospective vendor to accomplish, the timeframe, the work products, and any deliverables. During this time, the Requestor should also submit a list of suggested suppliers so that once we're completed with the RFP document, that we can send that list or the RFP document to suppliers as well. It is at this time during the process that the staff from Business Services begin to work on a timeline for the RFP to include advertisement deadlines, the question and answer submission deadlines from the prospective proposers, interview deadlines, if an interview is to take place for the RFP or presentation, and the projected date of the notice of intent to award and present to the board for approval. A sample timeline was included and provided in the Board of Trustee package correspondence that was sent uh in in December. It's in that white booklet. The evaluation criteria, which is the next step uh of the procurement process, of the RFP process, accompanying the scope of work that is submitted by the Requestor and/or sponsor, you hear me use those interchangeably. The scope of work that's submitted by the Requestor is uh a recommendation for evaluating the proposals that are submitted. The RFP evaluates the qualitative factors in the proposal in addition to price. So it's not just price, it's based on best value uh for the procurement. There are qualitative factors such as professional experience of the proposers, the project approach, the work plan, et cetera. Following that, proper notice. We are required to publish in a newspaper of general circulation once a week for two weeks, any type of procurement that exceeds the statutory or any type of RFP, I'm sorry, that exceeds the statutory threshold. The RFP document at, is also placed on the Business Services website. And we also send out the RFP to prospective vendors or vendors that we are aware of that may be able to offer that service. We also, again, as I mentioned during the scope of work process, we get a list from the Requestor and or sponsor of the RFP of vendors that might be able to provide those services. The next section is to develop the RFP document. Within that RFP document, we have, which is a word document converted to PDF and posted, but it details the information regarding the request. It includes background information on the district, background information on why we are requesting the the services that are that are needed, um to include details, explanations of why they are needed, and instructions to the proposers on how and where to submit their proposals. Instructions on what information to include in the proposal um is also included, as well as how to organize the various information. There is also information on with whom prospective proposers should communicate. With prior, well, communicate with prior to award. And in that document, we state that their communication should be with the procurement specialist only. Specifically, we, and I don't know if you want to hear this, but it says, "Proposers shall not prior to work, contact or communicate either verbally or in writing with any of the following persons other than the person who was named in the RFP document as the procurement specialist." And that is any trustee, any officer, employee, or representative of the district, including consultants uh that are helping the district or providing advice on a particular item. We do that to ensure that the prospective proposals do not feel that they have a leg up by talking to anyone else throughout the process. The unauthorized compute uh communication narrative is included for all vendors to ensure, again, equal opportunity to win the district's business without receiving information about the solicitation from anybody else. There is an opportunity, if there are questions that the proposer has, to ask questions, and a deadline for doing so is included in that RFP document. Any changes that uh are, that happen with the RFP, we do publish that in an addendum. The next bullet up or box up is the pre-proposal meeting. If there is a pre-proposal meeting, which is optional, we don't do it in every RFP, it just depending on what's needed. For example, we did it in the trash hauling, the trash hauling RFP, where the vendors needed to walk the site and see the campuses of what they would, where they would collect the the rubbish from. But it's optional and it's not always included. Part of, the next part of that process is a proposal submission. Proposals should be submitted by the deadline indicated in the RFP instructions. These documents are sealed and remain so until the RFP deadline and/or other dates that are indicated in the RFP document. Proposals received after the deadline will not be opened, but will be returned to the proposer or held sealed until the conclusion of the RFP process. If we have only received two responses or less, and we receive a late proposal, then we will honor the late proposals uh that will be considered. This was also one of the questions posed by the Board of Trustees. These proposals are opened in private by district personnel and are reviewed for responsiveness to the RFP. Responsiveness relates to the required documentation that is identified in that RFP document. And those include items such as a non-collusion affidavit, a certificate of nondiscrimination, exceptions and deviations to our standard contract form, et cetera. We're almost done with this slide, but the proposal evaluation. After proposals have been deemed responsive to the RFP, a list of all proposers' names are included on the district's conflict of interest form and sent to each committee member that was comprised by the sponsor to uh sent to them before they receive a copy of the actual RFP documents. The conflict of interest form helps to identify financial, non-financial, and any type of employment conflicts of interest. Employees may not participate in any decisions if those decisions will affect them financially. And employees may not participate in decisions that would affect them personally in any way, in fact, or appearance. Individuals may not participate in decisions that involve an entity with whom they have had uh any type of employment previously or prospective employment. It is only after these forms are reviewed to ensure there is no conflict of interest that they, the proposers are sent to the committee for review. The, as I mentioned earlier, the proposal evaluation members are chosen by the sponsor of the RFP. And it is typical that the RFP committee members include a college president, a vice president, a district representative, and other staff or industry experts familiar with the services being solicited. The committee is instructed to evaluate the scores independently. This is stressed repeatedly by members of the procurement team. They are part of every meeting that the team has with the sponsor of the RFP, and they are there to ensure that policies and procedures are followed. We don't allow for group scoring. Independent scoring is how all of the evaluators should be evaluating the respective proposals. I must say that there are some people in this room who have participated in RFPs with us. They're not always happy with us telling them what they can and cannot do, but we want to ensure the integrity of the process, and so that's why we do what we do. The committee member's scores are based on the criteria identified in the RFP, and it's identified in the RFP at the time the RFP document is submitted and published. The contracts and procurement specialists, along with the sponsor, tallies those scores in accordance with what is in the RFP. So with the RFP document, if we say we're going to take the aggregate scores, we take the aggregate scores. If we say we're going to average the scores, then we average the scores. We want to ensure that we do every single thing that we stated in the RFP, that that's actually how we evaluate the proposals. The scoring criteria is based on what we articulate to the public, what we will do. We do not change the evaluation criteria because people don't like the outcome of the scoring. If we do that, it will compromise our credibility and the entire process of the request for proposal. Typically, the proposer receiving the highest aggregate final rating is recommended to the board for approval. The final step, Board of Trustees authorize award. The final step in the process is that we present this to the Board of Trust, uh we present the RFP or the winning proposer to the Board of Trustees for approval. We have not typically built into the process notifying the Board of Trustees of the status of the RFP throughout each step of the process. The next slide, please. Finally, we have an RFP evaluation guide that predates me, that was here prior to my arrival, so I can't take credit for it. But it provides the, all of the information that an evaluator and a um evaluator and the sponsor of the RFP needs to guide them through the process. The evaluators are instructed to read prior to their first committee meeting. The guide includes the committee's roles and responsibilities. It includes conflict of interest and the confidentiality form. It includes, as I mentioned earlier, the evaluation process and that scoring should be independent. Excuse me, it includes what we should do with regard to quality assurance and our process for ensuring that the scores are correct. And it includes the notice of intent to award, how we do, how we do that, how we issue that notice of intent to award, and it includes the bid protest procedures. After the issuance of the notice of intent to award, as I mentioned, we may encounter bid protests. I I will say that on our, we have not had any bid protests with regard to the general procurement process in the last four and a half years. But if a proposer does file the protest, the first step is that it goes to the Director of Business Services for review to ensure that all of these steps were indeed followed. And if they were not followed, um then there is a grounds, there's a grounds for protest. If the, after the Director of Business Services identifies and shares that um whether or not the protest will be upheld or not upheld, it can go to the Deputy Chancellor for approval or to the Chancellor if the Deputy Chancellor was involved in the actual procurement process. Next slide. So in summary, I mentioned that we were going to talk about the governing authority, the delegation of authority for the on-campus and also at the district office. I talked briefly about the district-wide procurement training. We discussed the procurement transaction threshold, the monthly board approval process for ratification, the competitive procurement process. And I hope that I've answered the questions also that were posed at the December board meeting regarding the questions related to the request for proposal. So again, I thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to the, this body the procurement process so that we know that we do have a well-established process with policies and procedures. And we have a professional procurement team that conducts the day-to-day operations and know that we are your eyes and your ears. And we want to ensure that we do things that are proper, that are legal, and that are correct. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moffett, and um also thank you, Ms. Gordon, for your portion of the presentation. So now, um is there any discussion, colleagues, any questions, any comments? I'll start down to my left with trustee Hoffman.
Thank you. Thank you for the very thorough presentation. I really appreciated it. Um so thank you both, and it was really nice to meet your team because you're right, we have no idea who is working in, you know, behind the scenes, but thank you so much, and thank you for being here and introducing yourselves. I have a question about the training. So does that mean when you're picking a team to to do the scoring, you're only picking people who have previously been trained? Or is there a chance that somebody might wind up um in that process who hasn't had the training? I'm just curious as to how that process works. In that process who hasn't had the training? I'm just curious as to how that process works.
That's a great training. I mean, a great question. Um, one of the, so the slide that we talked about training and who must attend the training. Is the VPs of administration because they are binding the district. Um, with regard to the procurement transactions. With regard to the RFP, it is very possible that there, someone who has not attended the procurement training. Can sit on the RFP panel. One of the first things, one of the first meetings that we have with the procurement, uh, for the RFP evaluation team. Is to show them that booklet, which is the RFP evaluation guide. And the procurement specialist goes over or reviews that RFP evaluation guide with the. Committee members. And some of those committee members may not be district employees. They may be outside subject matter experts as well as district employees. So it is possible that someone who sits on the RFP committee. May not have gone through the district wide procurement training.
I guess I wouldn't have as much concern with it, with a. Subject matter expert as I would for an employee who maybe doesn't have subject matter expertise. And we know that, you know, not everybody can, but doesn't understand. How to score or what the scoring process should look like. And so I think this board would probably feel more comfortable if we knew that anybody sitting on one of these teams. Have to go through some kind of a training.
Well, we do go through, um, the evaluation of the scoring and how it should happen. We don't actually thoroughly go through the procurement. During the procurement training, we talk about the RFP process. But it's not a detailed training. I think, you know, the training that we provide right before the RFP. We share with them and the sponsor shares with them what they're looking for on the evaluation criteria. So say for professional. If they are looking for professional experience and that is a 25% of the scoring. The sponsor will share, you know, I really would like, you know, someone who has a PhD or a group. Who have PhDs or whatnot. So I, you know, if you could. I'm looking for you to score that particular vendor a little bit higher if they have certain criteria. That the sponsor identifies.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Bella.
Um, thank you very much for your presentation. It was definitely very thorough. I think for me, I don't really have a question as much as. You know, I really want to first of all commend you for just all the firewalls. I mean, there's just a lot and the procurement specialists, they have a big task. Bring forward all these items. I think that maybe there's a, um, difference in kind of like understanding of what. I think the trustees like, so for example, if the trustees. Um, are constantly using, let's say, we contract like, you know, a PR firm, which trustees continuously. You know, might have, you know, contact, which is really rare that we have contacts with. You know, people we procure. But in that case, you know, a PR firm is definitely somebody that we, you know, especially the, the board president. So I think for me, it's more that balance of like. You know, getting, for example, the board president input, you know, what kind of firms are out there? Are they diverse? Are they LGBT? Are they African American? And then of course, we don't want to see the sausage making because we want to make sure it's, there's no influence. But it can't just be like, oh, you know, here it is, approve it. And we have no clue of what happened. During that beautiful process, you know, so. I think there, I understand you're being careful because you don't want us to influence. But we don't want to influence. We're, we just don't want to get something the night before like, holy crap, this is like a $30 million thing. We have to approve it. And the reason you didn't know anything about it is because we don't trust you enough or we, you know, you might input. Yeah, but it's, but if we don't, trust me, we don't care. We just. Want to provide input. Like if you look at the big, you know, uh, thing you provided, the, the, uh.
The chart with the, the boxes.
Where you put scope of work. I mean, that's a good opportunity to have the chancellor ask us, you know, hey, what are you looking? You don't even have to do it. Um, and then obviously kind of just do a couple of presentations on how it's going. Before we approve. And by the way, these are very, like one out of a hundred, right? Because. As you mentioned, we get 80 to 100 things. We don't want to, it's only, I think, stuff that the trustees have an interest in. That, that's it. And, and other than that, you know, it's especially when trustees deal with. Their day to day, they have to deal with, you know, let's say a, a professional person. Uh, like in my case, when we procure the leadership board goals person. Stuff like that. But, but other than that, I think it's just, I think a balance of, of how we. You know, get to, when we finally get to approve it, you know, where there are a couple of touch points. Versus the board trying to tell you guys who to hire. That's it.
Note taken. Um, I know that trustee Hernandez during the marketing RFP wanted, um, a presentation at a committee meeting. And that was accomplished and done. And, and I'm going to defer to the chancellor, my boss, about how we. Do that and but, or and know that we'll just add that to the timeline to be able to come to a committee meeting. And we have to decide whether that's going to be at the beginning of the process. Or the end of the process, but so that we can build that into the, the timeline for that.
I trust you and the chancellor, you guys make that call. It's just, that's all it is. It's just, you know, definitely, I think. What you showed today is that the process is, is, is transparent. And we have the paperwork and we can prove it, you know, and, and I think that's what's more important about today's presentation. That we see these firewall, they work, there's integrity in here. Um, how do we get to a point where, you know, at the end of the day. You're supported by the board and we're able to, you know, um. Find, uh, also that middle ground. I want to just end it with the diversity point that you mentioned. Your team is so diverse. And that makes me really happy. And I think, you know, as we move forward, that's what, you know, without saying anything else, that's how we, I think the Board of Trustees like our vendors to be too. And that's something broad we can say, right? Um, and I think you guys, I've seen a very big change in the way that we've had diverse. People do business with the district and that's really awesome. So I want to continue to encourage that part because I think you guys have done a wonderful job. On increasing diversity.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Moffett, if I may add a comment to that comment that, uh. I did. So with respect to the involvement of the board and the RFP development process, we also have to be made aware and be careful that. If the board is too involved in the pre development process, remember the bid protests do go to you ultimately if it is appealed all the way up through the organization. So if a bid protest occurs and the protest is based on how that development occurred or a process that maybe you guys. Would have been involved in if per your request, uh, trustee Bella, then that would be a conflict of interest. And that would be a concern because we usually have to have a separation of powers with respect to who's the decision maker. And who is the obviously business sponsor who's putting together some of the criteria for these processes. So I just want to just note that and just a reminder to be aware that we have to respect those separations.
Yeah, un- understood. And that's why I'm saying, you know, I think at the end of the day, we, the chancellor is really our voice as far as like what. You know, we look broadly in, in what procurement looks like in a district. We, we're definitely not going to be singling out or. Talking about any particular ness- necessity or want. But definitely, I think, for example, diversity, we have that in our LS, LS EDB program, which is. I believe we're adhering to that and we're meeting those goals, which is amazing. So, but absolutely understood on that.
And just to piggyback on, on trustee Bella, I, I have absolute faith, faith that this district can find a way. To work within the confines of the law and to make sure, uh, that they're adequately informing the board while at the same time, making sure that they're. You know, safeguarding against any future bid protests as is done in any, a lot of different jurisdictions across our city. And state and federal government. So I think that we can figure it out and we can make sure that we're getting more than just a blurb on an agenda. For multimillion dollar RFPs. That's, I think that's the point and that, that has to happen going forward. So we, I think we need to figure out a way that we can revise our strategy to be able to do that. And we absolutely can, I think we can.
Thank you. Um, trustee Veras.
Thank you. Um. I was trying to, uh. Justify the presentation versus some of the questions and angst, uh, over the past month or so. And I wonder if, um. If it's just the fact that, um, I think we. We maintain the approval authority at the end, certainly the appeal process, we understand that. I think, um, sometimes, um. The desire to do some of the work, um, educates the scope of work. But, um, maybe sometimes it doesn't exactly hit where the desire of the board may be. Uh, and I, I say this with the vast majority of procurement, um, moving through without a question or without a concern. Uh, to use the example of, of media or, or, or advertising or those kinds of things which had been a special concern of the board of the years. I, I wonder if that sort of the, the length of time that it takes to go from when you first talk about it. To eventually, um, approving it is, is maybe the gap is too wide. And that there may be some time on the scope of work that should be discussed a little bit before the process starts. And I don't think that's necessarily a legal gap because it's, it's really on the front end of it. Um, and it's the middle piece of it where most of the protests will actually come from and we can maintain the authority there. But, but I'm wondering if that kind of conversation on major issues that the board has, has asked for the chancellor to consider. That there's a bit more of a conversation on the scope piece, uh, and then we can see the process, um, take place. There's, I, I think sometimes also crossover, uh, concerns on, on services that are above 115,000. Um, and multiple and repeat awards, uh, that come forward. I think we've asked questions about, you know, when we see somebody up there three, four, five times. Of, of, and when awards start, uh, becoming several hundred thousand dollars, even if there are services, sometimes you want to think. That even though it's service and it's legal, that when it's that much money, we should think about a competitive process. Uh, as opposed to, you know, just sort of a space that, that, that may meet the concerns that we're asking for, the services that we need to have rendered that. We would imagine for, for three, four, $500,000 that there should be additional, uh, people to compete for that kind of, um, that kind of, uh, need. So, um, so that's sort of on the front end, but I also wanted to, there's, there's, there's three other things I wanted to raise. That have been discussed over the years when it comes to procurement that I wanted to raise here. And it would, I don't think we're part of the presentation as clearly. This is probably I would have liked it. And maybe we can continue with these items in the future. A few years back, we. We approved a sustainability policy and in the sustainability, uh, policy, we named, um. Potentially, uh, procurement as an area where we can increase our sustainability. And, um, and perhaps that's one area we can revisit. In our sort of overall process and consider some training and retraining, uh, to view. Um, how we can procure in a way that meets our sustainability goals. And so I know Dr. Smith, you know, I know we talked about it. It was a. Item there. It's kind of. Big policy to implement and process and procedure and, and, uh, but a lot of our goals can be met with, um, with, you know. Uh, a very modern and a very aggressive, um, um, thought process and nod to the sustainability process and procurement. And so I think it's a standing goal, but it wasn't sort of listed in our overall board, uh, in your presentation. So I think I'd like to see that, um, included a little more. Secondly, um. You know, I think, I think conversations about ethics. Values, you know, sort of the standards of the board. And I'm going to use two examples here. Um, one. And we, and this, this kind of leads to like sort of my third piece. You know, the other area of big procurement that happens in this district is in the build program. And so, um, sometimes to understand that what we have, um. Internally, it appears to be a bit different, not, not, you know, I think we all follow California. Standards and rules, um, but there are, there are from, from at least sitting here at the DIAS, some, some nuanced differences in terms of approach. With what happens at LACC build and what happens internally. And so I think I, you know, I, I don't know, and I can't say that there are wide differences. But, um, there are things that every once in a while are noticeable. Um, to me and, and I can't exactly put my finger on it every, each and every single time. It's maybe it's personality, maybe it's time and length. Maybe it's evaluators, maybe it's all, it's just the way that each of the entities, um, take it and approach it. But certainly one thing that does come up there is, um. Is, is in their, um, local emerging disabled veterans, um. Owned, you know, sort of statistics. Like we, we get that there and it, it's part of that sort of statement of values and it's part of the reports. So we know kind of who we do business with on that side. We don't necessarily know who we do business with on, on the internal general fund side. And so to sort of understand that component, um, uh, and, and how we can get to sort of a similar ethical value and, 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 and standard, I think would be very helpful. And over and, and, you know, one of the things I've asked for, at least in the facility side, and I think it's, as we get pushed that way. We should push, um, this way too, is, is, is really, you know, and, and maybe it's just something else we need some legislative and. Maybe board policy is to consider social responsibility with the people we contract with. Um, oftentimes, you know, um, you see companies come in and they are able to win procurements, whether it's, you know, on the construction being low bids. Or people who cut prices, but, um, those price cuts come at the expense of other things they do that are. That are either bad to their employees or bad to our corporate practices or whatever. And so I think at some point, uh, our. Our documentation should be clear that that's, those are things we're not going to tolerate in this district. I mean, we're. Public institution and we have to uphold standards high. Um, and so whether that sort of lays into ideas of like labor peace or corporate responsibility or all those kinds of languages that we've had in. Bearing pieces, but ultimately I think that the comment is, is that if we can get to sort of a standard feel or. It feels like when you do business with LACC, whether it's bill or whether it's, um, any of the other things we do. There's, there's some common touches. But I want to leave you with, with, with this question is. What do you think needs to be improved?
A tough question, trustee Veras. What do I think that needs to be improved? Um, I think that there's always room for improvement in the process. I think that, um, cer- certain times expectations need to be improved. As far as if we don't plan our procurements, right? For example, we know certain things come every single year. We have Black History Month in February. We have Women's History Month coming up. We have graduations in June. And so with helping to, um, push out. That narrative that you have to plan, 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 and we, and we do that. When we train the campuses and that we can't, it takes time, procurement takes time as far as. Negotiating contracts and things of that nature is not as easy as it goes to the board. And it gets approved, but we have to negotiate the terms and conditions with the vendors that we, that we utilize. And sometimes that's a lot of, there's, there's pushback that's there. So I would say, um, just with expectations regarding. Um, what's involved in the process. Um, I will say to your comment about the sled V. Mentioned, and I didn't mention this in our process, I was shortening the. The presentation, but for every RFP, we have, we allow 10% of those scores to a small local. Emerging disabled veterans vendor. Um, so they can receive 10 points for that or 10%, whatever the scoring. Criteria or methodology that we have for that particular vendor. Um, I will get back to you on the, the issue related to sled V on this side of the house. But as I understand when I came in that we, a lot of that was covered under, um, our build program and under the general procurement, we did not. Have the resources or, or we did not, um. We did not engage in that, that a lot of the other sled V product or narrative, I guess, other than the 10%. So I have to do a little bit of history, do, do a little bit of research with the people who have been here. I have some people been on my team for 30 years. So I have to do a little bit, bit of research and see exactly where that policy came from and why we were not as robust. Uh, in that area of sled V.
Oh, excuse me, trustee Veras. As you know, in the beginning with the bill, the reason we came up with that and made it specific, a specific point. To make sure we were watching the sleds is because of the amount of money that we were dealing with. And we also said, we didn't put it in writing, not formally, but it was for district wide, all purchases. So we watch it for all purposes, but it is not as specifically brought out. Outside of the bill program. And it's because of the amount of money. You know, we're dealing with billions of dollars and we know that you want to make sure that you get everybody included in that. But for the other side, it was just try to do it, but we didn't enforce it.
Well, there's still several hundred million on this other side too, so.
That's million, we're talking billions on the bill side.
I get it, but it's limited. This is several hundred every year for hopefully, you know, for a long time, longer than the build program.
But that's an easy fix to make it a policy to always look at it, but that's. But that's an easy fix to make it a policy to always look at it, but that's the reason it was not written up and enforced as well is because of the dollars.
Thank you for that. So trustee Bwana.
I do have a question. But it wasn't to you. I made that promise. Does anyone evaluate the scoring performed by the RFP evaluation committee to make sure and identify inconsistencies with the RFP criteria and look for opportunities for improvement?
Does anyone evaluate the RFP scoring? So after the fact, after the, the RFP has been awarded or during the process?
So let's just say there's an, there's an RFP process and in that RFP process you have scoring. And in that process, it shows inconsistencies that are not reasonable among individuals that are scored. At what point does, does someone evaluate that and say, hey, this is awkward?
So what we do is we will, if we notice an inconsistency, we will verify with the person, with the evaluator, is this indeed your score? Is this a score that you wrote? And again, as part of the process, they have to sign and attest to that is indeed their score. We do not go back and question their scoring. We highlight it, we note it to the sponsor, and that's about it because you have a cross section of usually the district of people who are scoring. So their perspectives on a particular procurement may be different than the next person. So my scoring perhaps on a particular item on an RFP might be very different because of my role as a, my role in the district and my position in the district might, you know, I may evaluate it differently. But do we question people's scores? Not necessarily, other than to verify that that was indeed their score and we tabulate it and make sure that it is indeed correct. But as far as questioning it, no, we don't.
I think maybe just to clarify a bit, you know, obviously scoring is subjective, but objectively fulfilling and meeting the criteria that goes back to your scoring criteria that's on your RFP that you need to follow so that you don't have a sustained bid protest, that I think is what trustee Bwana is talking about. So is there an evaluation chair of the evaluation panel?
Oh, yeah.
That looks at the scores and they see a score that objectively does not meet the scoring criteria or an RFP. Is there, is there any evaluation of that?
So the chair of the committee works with the procurement specialists in tallying the scores and they see the scores. And if they feel that there is an issue, then that's something that I assume that they would bring to the attention. But we, I have not experienced a situation where a chair has brought to the attention of the procurement specialist that the scoring is out of whack and then they want to pull the RFP because we do have a provision in the RFP document that the district does not have to award. So I have not seen where the chair of the committee nor a procurement specialist has said, I don't believe that you evaluator, number one, your scoring does not, is not subjective.
I guess, do you think that there, and I'm not trying to interrogate you on this, but do you think that there may, do you think there's room for improvement in our RFP process that we can make sure that we're objectively meeting the criteria of our score, our own scoring criteria in an RFP?
Well, there's always room for improvement on any process that we have, but I, I can't tell you that whether there's room for improvement and how we could do that when it comes to evaluating what's in somebody's thoughts or how they viewed the information that was presented. I don't know that, again, we have not had any protests related to that and I don't know whether or not we have, we would have questioned it. We would have, we, other than if it just seems out of whack and then we show it to the, the sponsor of the RFP to say, you know, is this, do you think that something's wrong with this scoring? But one thing that we do, we will see if it's out of whack and we will say, you know, is this indeed your score sheet and signing off that it is your score sheet? But we do not, I have not, again, I've been in this district for a little over four years. I don't know if it has happened in the past with another RFP, but I can do some research on that to find out how maybe, how to question it without feeling, without affecting the process and maybe making the evaluator feel as though they didn't score correctly or pushing them to score in the same way that someone else wants to score.
Just to follow, follow up because that was my, my line of questioning, but thank you. And not, no, not, I haven't, thank you. But this is the final one. So likely with regard to, so let's just say you have an RFP by vendor X or whatever for service X or whatever, let's just say a million dollars, right? Not a hundred million, not a billion. And you have one, two, or three scores and it's very clear that, I'm not even going to say that, let's say they score 90% on, on, on whatever. Is there any rule within LACC or policy suggestion that would give that scoring chair the discretion to say it was appropriate, inappropriate, and the ability to say those scores will not be, whether there's a bid protest or not, is there an affirmative duty by the chair on how to deal with those scoring?
So in the RFP evaluation guide and in the RFP document, there is potential for us to put in the document that if, but we have to say it in the RFP document, that if we see or we will evaluate the scoring and eliminate the very high and very low scores. That's what we have in our RFP evaluation guide, but it has to be included in the RFP documentation at the time that we present it to the public for viewing. So that is something trustee Hernandez asked about, is there something that can be improved? Maybe perhaps that's something that we could include in every RFP is that if, you know, the district reserves the discretion to throw, eliminate the highest score and the lowest score, but it has to be part of that RFP documentation and not change the game once the game has been played.
Um, trustee VP Hernandez.
Am I correct on that, General Counsel? I just want to make sure.
Yes, you're correct. In our evaluation guide and in the past, what we have done before is we have thrown out below score, the high score, and just averaged all the scores in between. As long as we put that in the RFP from the get-go, when it hits the street for public procurement and we follow that process all the way through, then we should be obviously sound in what our process is.
Thank you for that clarification. VP Hernandez, did you have any other?
Thank you for this presentation. I mean, I'll just state the elephant in the room. Obviously, as trustees, we have seen through, you know, recent public records requests that there are scoring that has come up in past RFPs that seem to indicate discrepancies that objectively do not follow the scoring criteria for that specific RFP. And so you've, you've heard it, folks in the room today, saying that they'd like to hold us accountable for, you know, errors in a procurement process. And we want to make sure then that we are doing everything that we can to improve that process because it does not seem perfect. And it does seem that there are some gaps. And so, you know, I do want to, trustee Bwana's question was my question, and I just really want to underscore that I think that there's a lot of improvement that needs to be made in terms of looking, you know, figuring out how we identify those scoring criterias, discrepancies that come, that happen in an RFP so that we can safeguard ourselves against any bid protest that comes our way and make sure that we are being really vigilant about discrepancies that don't meet our own guidelines. So that, I just wanted to really highlight that and then highlight what trustee, what trustee Vela also mentioned and just that we, I think it's really, really imperative that we get more information about these RFPs. And I like what trustee Veras said about, it's not necessarily, you know, we, absolutely, I personally do not want to jump into the weeds of, of an actual procurement process, but I would like as a trustee to have some input on the scope before it even goes out to bid, really talking about and thinking thoughtfully about what it is that we are actually asking for in a way that's within the confines of the procurement law. So that's, I think, those are my two points, but I just definitely wanted to highlight that because I think if there's a way that we can improve upon the evaluation process, whether it's having folks trained appropriately so that they're aware of how they're supposed to score and then making sure we have folks that are overseeing that scoring to making sure it's appropriate.
Thanks. VP, you know?
No questions at this time. Just thank you so much for the presentation. I think it was very helpful and insightful and for all the people that worked through the whole process. So thank you.
Thank you.
I guess one more question. What is the next step here? Like, is this it?
Can I say one more and then we can ask for next step? So in, in, in line with, you mentioned about throwing out the highest score and the lowest score. I mean, I think training is key, but is there also a way to let folks know and have it written into our policies? If your scores are like completely inconsistent, if you, you know, score one particular RFP organization super high and nobody else gets any other scores and it's all zeros, your score will be thrown out? I mean, can we write that into the rules? Because I think that was one of the problems is that we saw a huge inconsistency and those scores probably just should have been thrown out.
That's a great comment, trustee Hoffman. I think what the board is looking for is perhaps what we call a scoring matrix that we develop as we develop the RFP such that we can educate the evaluators when they're about to score as to what the criteria means and what the, the range is depending on what the criteria is so that they fully understand what, what their scores are representative of. So we can probably better educate them by providing what we call a scoring matrix ahead of time that gives them a sense of range, which is acceptable for that type of score.
Thank you for that.
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess the follow-up, that's, I like that idea. Can we create a matrix or something that we can add to the procurement process to help?
Certainly provide that support to our procurement unit for the non-bond to be able to develop what that scoring matrix can look like.
I think that would be a good next step.
So I would like to thank you for your presentation and I just want to ask a question because trustee Bwana and trustee, sorry, trustee Veras and trustee Vela made me think of this. Does this procurement process include the way that we purchase textbooks and learning material for students?
So we don't have to abide by the competitive procurement process for educational materials.
So there is.
For stu-, I'm sorry, for students, yeah, for students, yes.
So, so there is no requirement to, they only purchase textbooks or learning materials from a vendor that offers additional resources for our hard of hearing or visually impaired students or they, they can just go out and find a textbook vendor or vendor for a particular book?
If it's for students, we don't have to abide by that process and they can go out to a vendor without a competitive process.
Yeah, that's probably.
Yeah.
So we don't have to competitively procure by law. The ed code allows that exemption, president Hernandez. However, we do have, for example, inaccessibility of technology instructional material, there are standards for that that we have to establish to make sure that we comply with the ADA and things of that nature.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I didn't get your last comment, trustee Henderson.
It was can, when, when, I guess an instructor or whomever wants to purchase a textbook, can they simply go to a vendor to purchase that particular book? Or is this, are they required to purchase material, are faculty period required to purchase from a particular vendor? Not so much the RFP process, but are, is there a requirement or level of expectation in terms of, I guess, the, the level of resource material available? Does that particular textbook vendor offer that particular book that meets the needs of visually impaired students, of hard of hearing students? Is that a requirement?
Is it a requirement that there has to be a process where they have to go to multiple vendors or can they just go out and buy?
That when they go out and buy, that that is the requirement that the vendor have inclusive material?
Oh, I, yes, if they, I think if they're purchasing for that particular type of disability or ADA requirement, that the, the, usually the faculty will put that in the request of the recruitment personnel will use that as criteria for purchasing that particular type of product, if I'm understanding you correctly.
So that's not a procurement requirement?
So what happens in the process, it, it's part of the procurement process, but it's not necessarily handled per procurement? So what hap-, a faculty member's instructional technology, president Henderson, it then gets recommended, but then it has to be reviewed with respect to our IIETP process, which goes through an accessibility review and it's signed off as to whether it is accessible or whether we, there's some kind of accommodation we could provide to that instructional material such to make it accessible. Yes. And then we also, in that same respect, again, technology, because that is the wave of the future. The VPAT, we call them VPATs, which is vendor accessibility technology documents, they have to present that too as well for review. So before we actually purchase this, they have to, kind of the vendors have to meet those criterias for review.
Okay, yes, I understand now the, the question. So yes, and the procurement specialist check for the EEAP for the VPATs to make sure that it meets the federal ADA standards. And we have a checklist that's part of that booklet, the blue booklet that we provided you in the back. It's a checklist for ADA and EEAP for various software. So yes, I understand the question now. Thank you.
May I make one more comment? I'm sorry. I know this was a presentation for information only, but is there a way that we can have an action item attached to this presentation to bring back the scoring matrix with the, sort of the revisions that we talked about? Do we need a formal motion for that? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, board chair, for indulging me.
Yes, thank you. Here's what we heard in terms of next steps. We're happy to put this in writing to the board. One is our steps that we will take to better inform the board on some key procurements that are coming up. Clearly, and these are just the ones that came off of the top of, of giving the board's interest of late and the last couple of years, our median advertising, campus safety, the PMO procurement is coming up, and clearly the enterprise resource system, those major procurements that are coming up. So we will find a way with it through board committee or through presentations such as this to inform the entire board on some of these are very important activities that are coming up. Also, I heard that we will take a closer look at the, at the RFP process that Ms. Moffett outlined and look at whether we underscore sustainability of social responsibility and award and that in a way that's fair to all potential bidders. We'll look to extend the sled policy that we have very successfully deployed in our build program for the entire procurement process for the district, I think Ms. Gordon. We've talked about that before, man, I think it's time that we, that we start to look at how that looks. And with respect to the scoring evaluation, quote unquote, in order to limit and reduce what can be discrepancies in scoring and whatnot, we'll look to train and educate and put together a scoring matrix, or in my language, scoring rubric, so that evaluators can understand what's an acceptable range. So, General Counsel, thank you for that excellent point. So we're happy to report back on all of these. I hope I captured the major elements.
President Henderson, is there any way we can also add those touch spaces or touch points that I mentioned earlier? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, so basically, like I think we mentioned that earlier, right? Like just the way successfully Juliette Hidalgo presented.
Yes.
At the, I think, Public Affairs Committee? So I, I just want to see touch points where you let us know about, you know, what's going on. I think also Dr. Smith did a great job on some of his procurement during the year. So in presenting it to us, thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation. Madam Chair, that concludes our presentation. Members of the board, Ms. Moffett, thank you so much, Ms. Gordon. Excellent presentation. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ms. Moffett. Thank you, Ms. Gordon, and thank you, Ms. Dega, for, for adding your clarification. So, now, moving on to item I, noting the correction for item V1, which is read in the opening for the record, which was the authorization settlement of claim with Orbach Huff and Henderson LLP to pay for legal services outside of the scope of the professional services contract for work performed from August through November 2023 for a cost of $44,186. We now have for our review the combined consent calendar for items J1 through W2. These items include consent calendars for human resources, Personnel Commission, Academic Affairs and Student Affairs, Budget and Finance, Business and Facilities. They have a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for items J1 through W2. Motion made by VP Eno and a second by VP Hernandez. Are there any items that require additional information? All righty then, roll call please.
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Thank you. Now, item X. May I have a motion and a second? Or this is the mission, the East LA College Mission Statement for item X1. Is there a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Still moved by VP Eno, second by VP Hernandez.
May I give a quick comment before you go? Thank you, Dr. Ramon, for this. I wanted to note that, say, what, you know, the timing of this is important. I wanted to note that East Los Angeles College will be submitting their proposal formally to the State Chancellor's Office for our, what could be our fifth baccalaureate degree at the LACC D in respiratory therapy. So, I, so we needed to put this in as a formal approval so that we could submit it and attach it to the ELAC application. There are two windows to apply, both in January and August, and we wanted to get in now. So, thank you, Dr. Ramon, for your team and your work in putting that proposal together and to LA Valley College for leading the way. We do have a fourth baccalaureate in respiratory therapy already approved at LA Valley. This could give us an additional opportunity to offer a four-year baccalaureate science degree in an applied workforce field for about $10,000 total cost, tuition, which is an amazing cost in high quality. So, thank you. That's why we're doing this.
Thank you for that. And again, kudos to you, President Ramon. Madam Board Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Yes. Thank you for that. Item Y, they have a motion and a second to adopt business items Y1 through Y3.
Still moved.
Thank you. Motion made by VP Eno. I'll second Henderson. Yes, yes, yes. Are there any items which require additional information?
I do. So, two things. One, on Y3 with the authorization of professional service agreement. If I can request, is it, I know now in, in, I see this is, is, is very positive for the district, but I wanted to see if we can either through a chancellor's report or just a memo or response, all the different kinds of activities we have going on because we've budgeted, we have, I don't know all the activities, I just wanted to get it all in one place since we've done it over time and over different places to understand and to, to know all the resources we have going into African American students. So, so that would be great and I would appreciate that. The, but the first question I had was the professional service agreement with Harvard College. And just to be clear in, in, in my head and for the public here, this is a blend of, of apprentices, but also at the same time, it's, it's actual marketing work and then how is that blending with existing contracts we have?
Okay, so this is a grant that we received from, I believe, the state and it's going to be, it's still administered by Harvard College and it's for 100 students that'll be Harvard students or LACC D students to have apprenticeship, join our apprenticeship certificate completion program at Harvard. So, that's a-
So, it's, so it's, so it's a grant program, but it's, it's mostly student-based curriculum, but I, I guess I read, I wasn't clear.
Yeah, no, and it's going to be helping out with the marketing for Harvard College in regards to digital marketing.
Okay, so, and, and then this is in coordination with the Eldery Contract and all the other things we've got going on?
No, this is, this is separate.
Can we just, can I make the recommendation that, that there is some least coordination with existing marketing that we're paying for? I don't know if that's, if that's possible, but, or this is a whole-
We, we could look at-
I mean, I, I think you would want to make sure that you're not crashing into each other if you're doing the marketing space.
So, we didn't do a lot of digital marketing at Harvard, so definitely won't be crashing into it.
Okay, so if there's no crashing into it, that was the only concern I wanted to raise.
We did a lot of billboards, a lot of, of the other marketing components.
So, so I just want to, if you're, if you're already traffic popping in, that's, that's perfectly fine. That was the only thing I wanted to raise, just so other people have done digital. And if this is the practicing, that this looks amazing and fantastic, but if, if, if it's as you say, I think I have no issues absolutely.
Yeah, and we'll keep you posted on the, on the process.
Thank you.
Any other additional request for information on this item? Okay, so, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Always.
Yes, Madam President, the members of the board, you just approved the item Y3. I want to highlight this and follow up our colleagues and who are from the California Community College System and who also work for the AMEND program. We are indeed embarked upon a, I believe, an historic occasion here. So, I wanted to bring up Dr. Aaron Vines, who's Executive Director of AMEND, and Dr. Byron Breland, who is the Chancellor of the North Orange Community College District. If I may ask Dr. Manuel Gabru to come up too, because these are the executive board leaders of AMEND, national program. They believe Dr. Vines, Dr. Breland, Dr. Gabru, the reason that we're engaged in this a series of activities around this historic partnership with LACC D. One is that to demonstrate a model of engagement for black student success. To really put together not, not just an emphasis on student engagement and student completion, but also an education for our faculty and staff. You, I think nationally, you put together the largest consortium of, of leaders around the issue of black excellence, student success. So, our interest to partner with your expertise with our, with your vast network. We're already beginning tomorrow morning when we visit with the presidents and vice presidents around enrollment management and taking some time to do that. So, we want to welcome you all here and would invite you to say a few words to our Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much and good afternoon and Happy New Year, chancellors, trustee. And also congratulations to Madam President, Vice Presidents. We are honored as AMEND to be here. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Vines, interim executive director and board member of AMEND. We're honored to partner with the district. We are excited that you all are on the forefront of demonstrating, not just talking about the work of equity and closing equity gaps, but you all are demonstrating the work. And so, we appreciate that. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Byron Breland, who's also a board member of AMEND.
Thank you, first of all. Happy New Year and thank you for the opportunity to work with the LACC D. You know, we see this as really a tremendous partnership. You all are the biggest and baddest and most preeminent community college district on the planet. And to be able to take this forward step and look at how we change our institutions to support the outcomes for our black and African American males is a tremendous statement, I think, for everybody to take note of. I've been a board member on AMEND for 15 years now and been a part of the organizational growth where it was just a group of folks coming together saying, you know, we got to do something different. These institutions are failing our African American male students. And we got together and just to watch the conference now become, as you mentioned, Chancellor Rodriguez, one of the biggest and largest conferences addressing how we educate our African American male students, inviting faculty, administrators and students to be a part of that conference with well over 1,400 participants. We look forward to breaking that record this year. But I want to thank the board, LACC D, you've always been supportive of our organization. And specifically, I want to thank Chancellor Rodriguez for the tremendous support over the years of all of us as individuals and certainly as an organization. I also want to thank most of the people sitting in this room, who, as I look around and say, you know, I see so many people I've, I've known who are now a part of the LA Community College District and doing this work and making this commitment. So, thank you all for this and we see this again as a collective opportunity to help change our institutions. And with LACC D leading the way, we're certainly be a part of that. We look forward to getting, getting to work tomorrow. Thank you.
And if I could just, I, I have to give special thanks to Dr. Regina Smith. She has really worked really hard in this partnership. And, and I've, I've worked with her quite a bit. It doesn't happen without her partnership or collaboration, her vision, and then as well as Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you all so much.
All right. So, I'd be, I'd like to get a photo before you all leave this up here. So, Madam President?
Yes.
Colleagues, thank you for that brief indulgence. Now, on to item Z. They have a motion and a second to adopt facilities, items Z1 through Z12.
Still moved.
Moved by VP Eno?
Second.
Second by Vella?
Yep.
Are there any items that require additional information? All righty then, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
And now for item AA. We'll move on to recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, would you please provide a brief explanation of these next items?
Yes, thank you. Regarding item AA1, we'd like the board to consider adopting a resolution that names an outdoor sculpture garden at Los Angeles City College in connection to several contributions that have been made. Last month, you received the contributions and whatnot, so we'd like for you to adopt this resolution that allow Dr. Gabru to name the garden, the Stephen and Deborah Libowicz Sculpture Garden.
Thank you for that. So, may I have a motion and a second on item AA1?
I'll move to approve item AA1.
Second.
Moved by Hoffman and second by Eno. Roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations, Dr. Gabru, and we thank the Libowicz family for their contribution, LA City College. Beautiful. Item 2 relates to board policy 6700. We brought the first read to you last month, that concerns civic center and other facilities use. As the board is fully aware, we carried legislation last year that would allow for consideration for facilities usage for groups that are served by our colleges and that would give consideration to community groups, nonprofits and those that serve under certain communities. So, this clarifies that a board policy and we'll work on administrative procedures with our colleges to allow that to occur. That new law took effect this January, so we're coinciding that with your approval.
Thank you, Chancellor. So, may I have a motion and a second on item AA2?
Still moved.
Okay.
Moved by Eno, second by Hernandez. Roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Thank you, members of the board. Item AA3 concerns board policy 7120, recruitment and hiring of LACC D employees, educational employees in particular. We brought this as a first draft last month. We bring it now for the second read. This concerns recruitment and hiring practices. This is the board policy. I, I would note that the administrative procedures are now being reviewed. We have a special task force that is reviewing the procedures per the board's direction. A couple of months ago, we did the college presidents hiring, so that committee had its first meeting last week and we look forward to finishing that up before too long. So, that is, but you can see the blue area there are the areas that have been modified per our, our recommendation to approve.
Thank you, chancellors. So, may I have a motion and a second to approve AA3?
Still moved.
Moved by Eno, second by Hernandez. Roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Verres?
Yes.
President Henderson, I know it's after the fact, but I do want to thank HR and everyone for taking the fast action. This will, I think, be a positive step towards recruiting, also hiring and also being, you know, cautious as we move forward in the hiring process. So, thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you for that, trustee Vella. Okay, item BB. This item requires six affirmative votes. May I have a motion and a second on item BB? This is the emergency resolution for the remediation of water damaged areas of, on the LA Valley College for the amount of $300,000.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Verres, second by Hoffman. Roll call, please?
Trustee Bona?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Verres?
Thank you. Item CC, notification of out of state travel. Board members, this is, there is one notice, no action is required at this time. And item DD, would any of my colleagues like to make any announcements or indicate future proposed actions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I have one announcement. On Friday, March 8th, which is International Women's Day, the California Community Colleges Women's Caucus will be hosting some guest speakers and a lunch and kind of an interactive day of celebration. And I want to thank, I know she's not here. So, Vice President Rosendres, if you could, greetings to President Ornalis for hosting at LA Mission College. It's invited, it's free. We're putting together invitations, so look for an invitation in your inbox through your email. But it's hosted by the California Community Colleges Women's Caucus, of which I'm a chair with Dr. Rowena Teminog from San Jose City College. Such a great event. It will start at 10:00 in the morning and go until about 2:00 PM of our biotech center or emerging biotech center. So, just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you. The other, VP Eno?
Yes, on January the 22nd at 2:00 PM, I will be hosting the Asian American Pacifica Advisory Committee- Yes, on January the 22nd at 2:00 PM, I will be hosting the Asian American Pacifica Advisory Committee to the Chancellor, and I invite everyone and anyone to participate. Thank you.
Thank you for that. One up? Alrighty then. Onto item E. We have three members of the public and/or faculty that have signed up to speak. Madam Secretary, do we have any additional? Okay, so we have Anthony Vasquez that is joining us remotely.
Hello.
You have three minutes.
Okay. First off, thank you for meeting with me today. I really appreciate you guys letting me to speak out here. So I've been with the district for about, going on four years now. I was with West LA at first, and then last year, I tried to get a coaching job at Los Angeles Southwest College. Before I got my paperwork, they said that I had an administrative hold on account. Then I researched it a bunch, and I found out it was for
Sorry, Mr. Vasquez. And you broke up a little. Can you repeat your reason, the reason that you were given?
Oh, for the, the COVID, for COVID vaccination.
Okay.
And I ended up turning in my religious exemption letter a year prior at West LA. But it wasn't either filed, or there was a mix-up, so I ended up having to hold. This past year, I was, I wasn't able to work at Southwest College. I've talked to Ms. Leslie Biggers, Emmanuel Nuno, Ryan Panic, Louisa Patrison, Dennis McGee, Lourdes Aguilar, Michelle Long Coffee. Um, that resolved my problem was Ms. Mary Van Ginkel. I still have an administrative hold. I would, I would, but I do have a hold on, on my account, and I really want to get it all.
Well, thank you for that. We're gonna have the appropriate administrative staff reach out to you to correct that.
So I did talk to the Ms. Leslie Biggers, which is in charge of HR, and they said that they're running an investigation for West LA, but I am not sure. I haven't heard nothing from her or anything. I've talked to her secretary many times, but not her.
Okay, to avoid disclosing too much of your personal information, the chancellor will make sure that the appropriate staff follows up with you.
Okay. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Can you make sure that you give our Board Secretary, Ms. Orozco, your email and a phone number?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Batima Baldewalla with great news.
And she's here.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's really good to see all of you. Happy New Year to all of you. I'm here to, for two, two reasons. But before I give you my reasons, let me tell you that I'm a proud adjunct faculty of LACC D. I'm also a National Association of Community College Fellow. And it is through my affiliation with MACI, National Association for Community College Entrepreneurship, that in summer of '23, I found out about a program, a challenge. I love challenges. So this was the United Nations Global Sustainability Challenge, and I managed to implement it into my fall English class, and we came in third. It was a bi-national team effort where we had to come up with a solution about around the United Nations. The goal number two, which was zero hunger, goal number 13, which was climate change, and goal number 15, which was life on earth. We were able to implement all those three goals and a solution. I, I believe I've written to all of you, sent you an email with, with our winning pitch and the work that we did with the Jordanian, also Palestinian students. And it was an amazing, amazing opportunity. The money that we got in wins, because we did win an amount, my winning team wants to go for something called STEM Shift, also by MACI. It's in Florida in February, and I was told that I need approval of the Board of Trustees in order to send, to make a student team and go to Florida. So there are six girls who want to go, one boy, and some of the girls are from a club called Girls That Code. So I'm hoping, we haven't quite done the paperwork with my college yet, but I'm hoping that if the board gives me the approval, I would like to take two teams from Valley College for the Florida Challenge, and I have handouts to give all of you. And I'm also inviting all of you for STEM Shift 2024. STEM Shift is another challenge where we incorporate NASA, the latest NASA technology, in finding solutions for the United Nations goals. So I hope, I'm here to actually request your support. So I hope I have your support. And I, I'm able to take two teams to Florida for Valley College. I'm also hoping to take a team from Pierce College, because my two boys are in Pierce College, but that's a different story. But at least from Valley College, I have six girls and one boy who are very interested in attending. So I'm here to request your support to send them.
Thank you. Make sure you get your paperwork in.
I, I will. Okay, I'll make sure to get my paperwork in. So shall I take that, that I do have your support? I do have the Board of Trustees.
Not in votes.
Okay, and I do have the handouts. I can give you-
I'll give them to our, our Board Secretary. She'll make sure that we get them.
Oh, okay, perfect. And I'm inviting all of you for the challenge too.
Thank you. And I believe remotely, we have Ashley Tahada. Tahada, I apologize if I butchered it.
No worries. You're correct. Good afternoon, President Henderson and members of the board. Ashley Tahada speaking on behalf of the Campaign for College Opportunity. Last month, the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office released a memo to all community colleges announcing the disbursement of $65 million to support the implementation of the Student Transfer Achievement Reform Act of 2021, also known as Assembly Bill 928. Through this funding, all 115 physical community college campuses will receive over half a million dollars each to support campus communities in implementing two key pieces of AB 928's requirements. The first requires colleges to place students on an associate degree for transfer pathway where one exists for their major program by August 1st of this year. And the second is to implement the new Singular Education Pathway, or CALGUTZI, which will streamline UC and CSU admissions requirements and increase access to all public four-year institutions across the state. Combined, these two changes will be key in closing racial equity gaps in student access to transfer pathways and a four-year college education. System, campus, and community leaders have worked tirelessly to lay the groundwork for this important student-centered policy, and we thank the many of you here today who have engaged in that process. Now we look forward to engaging with all three of your campuses as we move forward as a community to close racial equity gaps for Black and Latinx students across the district. LACC D has seen tremendous strides in uplifting ADT enrollment and completion, with six of your nine colleges meeting key benchmarks and awarding ADTs to degree-seeking students. Our continued partnership and collaboration will make reaching these goals possible in the very near future. As you consider how to best invest the collective $5 million your district will receive, we encourage you to look back to the chancellor's guidance memo, which provides some best practices in implementing AB 928. We would like to call out the immense value of investments in both teaching faculty and counseling faculty professional development supports, investment in technology upgrades at all levels, including CCC apply and program mappers, and investing in intentional communications and direct outreach plans to engage students on their expanded opportunities for transfer and degree completion. The Campaign for College Opportunity is committed to supporting Los Angeles Community College District in the implementation of AB 928 and every student-centered policy that comes before you. Please see us as an ally in this important work, and please do not hesitate to reach out if we can be of any service. Thank you so much.
So much, Ms. Tahada. So now, are there any members of the public that are signed up to address the Board on closed-session agenda matters?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. So the Board will recess to close session in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act Government Code, Sections 54950, and the Education Code to discuss the matters on the posted closed-session agenda pursuant to government code, Section 54954.5. May I have a motion and a second to recess to close session?
So moved.
Second, moved by Eno, second by Hernandez. Roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno? Trustee Vella? Trustee Veras?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe travel.